Good evening and welcome to this candidate forum. I'm Ravine Jimenez, part of the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties. The League is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates. In presenting these forums, it is our goal to provide opportunities for voters to become better informed about the people who are running for public office. Our 2025 primary election candidate forums feature these races with three or more candidates. They have been pre-recorded in person by Northwest Public Broadcasting at the WSU Tri-City Studio. They will now be available on YouTube, KTNW-TV, on the League's website, and through partner sites like the City of Richland and the Columbia Basin Badger Club through Election Day, August 5th. At this time, I would like to introduce our moderator, Matt Lovelace, from Merrell College of Communication, WSU Pullman. Please welcome Matt.
Well, thank you for that introduction from the League of Women Voters, great partners in our efforts here at Northwest Public Broadcasting. I am Matt Lovelace. Today, we're going to hear from candidates running for a pair of positions on the Richland City Council, part of our Vote 2025 series. Here at NWPB, we think all these races matter, and that's why we've invited candidates from every contested primary in Benton and Franklin County here to our WSU Tri-Cities Studio. And I want to thank all of you who've continued their investment into these programs. We believe civic engagement matters, and we want to help give you as much information possible to make an informed decision this 2025 election season. So here's what we've got planned for today, a full hour with candidates for the Richland City Council, as many as we could get to join us from the position six and seven races. We have questions provided and solicited by the League of Women Voters on issues facing our cities. And some ground rules for today, as we said, we invited all candidates from every primary with three or more people on that ballot, and we are giving everybody equal time. We'll give our candidates a platform for 90-second opening statements, and then we'll get into our questions. This forum, also obviously a television program, so as moderator, I may get to additional topics or cut time if we need it. We ask that candidates keep things civil, avoid interruptions, and stay on time and on topic. So let's get to it with our position six introductions and opening statements. In the Richland City Council Position Six race, we have an incumbent and some newcomers, Mr. Kurt Meyer, who we spoke with here a couple of years ago, seeking a second term. The challengers, Kyle Salz and Joshua Arnold. Mr. Arnold declined the League's invitation, but Mr. Salz is here with us today. We'll start with opening statements from you two and get right to it. Mr. Meyer, with your opening statement, sir.
Sure, thank you very much. What I focused on in my first term on Richland City Council is city business. And what that means to me is making sure that the staff that we hire to manage our city has the tools that they need from the policies that the city council sets. I don't believe in distractions like political parties or the culture wars, virtue debates, laser-focused on governing the city of Richland. And that means contributing to many of the efforts that are shared amongst the tri-cities. Part of my role has been on the Ben Franklin Public Transit Board of Directors. I'm also the liaison to the Code Enforcement Board. And the other thing that I focused on during my time in office is I don't miss meetings. There have been a couple of times I've had to remote in over Zoom, once because I was out of the state and once because I was out of the country, but I participated in those meetings. And so my focus is a high-performing, well-serving government that meets the needs of the people of Richland, and I hold myself accountable to show up and do the work and do my best to convince the rest of the city council to support the tools that I think our staff can benefit from in order to govern the city correctly.
Mr. Meyer, thank you very much. Mr. Salz, your opening statement, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Kyle Salz. I left Richland back right after I graduated high school, and I went into the military. I became a counterintelligence agent. I served for 11 years, deploying multiple times across the world, Afghanistan, Europe, across Asia and the Middle East. I served honorably, and I returned back to my home. I received several master's degrees, one in criminal justice, the other one in politics and history, and I immediately got involved with the local veterans of foreign wars. I've been elected local leadership here for the last 11 years. I was appointed the Washington State Aid Decamp, representing veterans' rights in 2021, as well as continuing to serve with the Benton County Veterans Courts. I'm one of the mentors there. Continuing on with my veteran aid for the local community, I'm a part of Love on a Leash, so I take my canine and do therapeutic care with local nursing homes, as well as vets in the hospital, as well as the emergency room. And my dog will probably be the newest Cadillac Hospital's therapy dog. Now, moving on, I got into law enforcement. I'm now been part of Hanford Patrol for the last eight years, and I will, I see joining the city council as another part of my civic duty for this community, and I will focus on making Richland a very business-friendly area, very focused and efficient for people to invest in and people to build in. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Salz, thank you. Thank you both for being here and for those opening statements. Now, for the rest of the hour, we're going to dig in some of the League's questions here, some time constraints for fairness, one-minute time limit for the answers here. We'll rotate the order of responses, starting at the top with Mr. Meyer here in Position Six. And, Mr. Meyer, an issue that may be on the ballot in November is whether or not all members of the council should represent the entire city of Richland, or whether there should be a distinction between areas of the city depending on where you live. What are your thoughts on that idea?
If I remember correctly, the ballot proposal that got sufficient petitions to get onto the ballot this fall recommends a mix of districted positions and at-large positions. And I'm 100% in favor of it. Prior to 2022, I think, could be wrong on that year, but until very recently, the entirety of the Richland City Council was from one neighborhood in South Richland. And I don't think that that's representative of the city. I think Richland is a diverse city. I think North Richland has its set of concerns, South Richland has its set of concerns, Badger Mountain South is an up-and-coming neighborhood that's got its own needs, and I think it's appropriate for the city council to reflect that. So I'm 100% in support of the districts, regardless of whether that means more or less competition for me getting reelected in the future. I think either way, districts are going to be a boon to the community.
All right, Mr. Meyer, thank you very much. Mr. Salz, your thoughts on the idea?
Now, I take the opposite stance, though, because if we want a district Richland, we would have to say, well, why? Is there a cultural or ethnic differences between South or North Richland or Central Richland? And we don't really see a cultural difference. We have to say, we look at their city council right now, they're made up of people of North Richland, Central Richland, Southern Richland, were made up all across, or made up of individuals from all across Richland. So we don't see that large difference of just in South Richland as of today. Now, as again I say, and I stress, is there any group that is not being appropriately represented by the city council? Is there a cultural difference between North and South Richland or Central Richland? And I've never heard a child or a kid in Hanford High or Richland High say, do you grow up in North Richland or South Richland? There's no fundamental cultural differences. So that's why I'm going to take the opposite stance on my colleague here. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Salz, thank you very much. And we're going to get right into question number two. We'll go right back to you. One of the things many entities and agencies are watching, of course, are their budgets. We use the term priorities a lot today, and this one's about budget priorities. And how might state or federal budget cuts affect the city, and how would you manage that?
I think the foremost thing that we have to take care of is roads and first responders. First responders are very key to help promoting a safe and secure Richland, as well as our roads. I think roads is a tough topic. I know a lot of people talk about every year, especially with our budgeting plans and how we're going to be able to fund those. And so again, as far as our budgets, there are things that we can cut, and I've actually made several proposals already. There are several municipal codes that if we actually just do it with a stroke of a pen, the city can make over $43,000 and save over $4,000 in manners. I spoke, I think it was last month already, about this proposal, that we could actually do business more efficiently, more professionally, just by looking at how other areas do business, and we could copy that. And if we can maintain that same level of professionalism, that same level of proficiency, then I say we need to be able to change municipal laws, be able to change some of the things that we could do for businesses. And I could go on for days, but I believe my time's out, sir.
All right, Mr. Salz, thank you very much. Appreciate you staying on time. Mr. Meyer, same question to you, just about managing the city's budget when federal and state funding gets reduced.
Yeah, it's definitely going to happen. It's something that I've been keeping on top of. You can go back and watch the City View recordings of previous city council meetings, and one of the questions I always ask whenever we're getting a budget presentation from a subject matter expert is, is there any federal or state funding that's currently at risk due to coming cuts that we need to worry about as far as making alternate plans for funding some of our projects? And I got to say, city staff keeps on top of it. They know, they keep track of where the funding is coming from, they keep track of where the funding is likely to reduce, they keep track of new opportunities to get funding into the door. Our staff recently won what they refer to as the Triple Crown, but it was three separate budgeting awards. We're the only city in Eastern Washington to have won that. And I think that with an alert city council and as professional a staff as we have, we're well situated to respond to any of these potential cuts.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. Let's move on to question three, and sort of along the same lines of federal decisions that are effect locally and financially, the stock tariffs. Mr. Meyer, what's your understanding of how the tariffs might affect the city of Richland, and what can cities do to mitigate its effect on its constituents?
I'm, so it's a complicated phrasing of the question there. Obviously tariffs affect everything we do, right? Even things that are quote-unquote "made in America" typically aren't entirely made in America, especially things like vehicles. The same part might cross the border four or five different times before it gets bolted into a chassis. So these tariffs can crop up in places where you might not otherwise expect them. And once again, this is a topic where, while I don't think that there's much the city can do about federal application of tariffs on the products that the city needs to acquire in order to function, I do think that we can work with our budgeting experts on city staff to make sure that we've identified the risk areas and then come up with alternate plans. That might mean a reduction in overall purchases, it might mean sourcing things from different companies, but either way, we've got the staff and the know-how. All they need is a city council willing to work with them.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. Understand it's a complicated question as well. Mr. Salz, I'll turn that complicated question to you.
I agree a lot with what Kurt just said. We have very little ability to inflict change on what's going on at the federal level, even the state level. Now, what we could do is just be good stewards of our funds right now and ensure that we don't go into a financial crisis, that we don't overspend, and we be fiscally conservative with the funds that we do have and look at how we can be more efficient. Now, like I said, I might have two master's degrees, but I don't know the best answers for all that. So what a person needs to do is find subject matter experts that could help advise the city council on how we can actually mitigate all these future issues.
All right, Mr. Salz, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to question number four. As immigration enforcement across the country has their radar up for a number of local economies, and a report released just this May from the Washington State Department of Budget and Policy estimated migrant workers at 150 million to the state's GDP. So in a region like the Columbia Valley, what in your mind is the solution to balancing immigration enforcement and economic stability? Mr. Salz?
I don't foresee a big issue with our local area with immigration enforcement. I have not seen any, there's no been any raids like we've seen in other areas. We haven't seen a large threat to people's safety and security here within Richland. Those are threats and issues in other locations, and we have a vibrant migrant community, a very respected, very influential, and they're a part of our community. And I don't foresee any issues with ICE agents, I don't see any issues with immigration enforcement. In fact, we have one of the fastest naturalization programs in the state right here up in Yakima, or Yakima. And the path to citizenship is amazing, it's very fast, and it's much faster than, if you want to immigrate to France, it's 10 years. You want to immigrate here, you could do it in a few months, and it is phenomenal. My wife just went through that process, it was awesome to see, and I apologize, my time is out.
Thank you very much. Mr. Meyer, same question to you, sir.
The city of Richland does not have a dog in that fight. It's not involved in immigration enforcement, that's a federal matter. If my understanding is correct, it's against state law for the city of Richland to get involved with that. And so I don't think the city needs to have a position on federal immigration enforcement at all. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Let's move on to question number five. And talking about homelessness, top of mind for a number of cities in the state of Washington across the country, including Richland, what do you see as a possible solution or solutions to the issue of homelessness in town?
Well, any kind of solution to a problem like that is going to have to be coming from more directions than just one, because homelessness isn't one problem. Everybody who's living rough is doing it for a different reason. And so we need to make sure that the city is well-suited so that as it grows and develops, it develops the services needed to support the people who have been put out of homes for whatever reason they've been put out of homes. I don't like a lot of the rhetoric that goes on on local social media and local radio shows. I think that while there isn't, I can't, you're not going to arrest your way out of a homeless crisis in the city, but what you can do is make sure that housing is affordable and achievable, and people who need care services can get them. And sometimes that means Richland needs to step up where other parts of the tri-cities might not be.
All right, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Salz, same question, what are solutions to homeless issues?
There's, it's a several-pronged answer to this. Now, for one, I've been working with homeless veterans for many years. There should be zero homeless veterans in Richland. And I would argue across tri-cities, there are so many resources out there, there's houses available, there is private organizations like the VFW, the American Legion, the Tri-City Veterans Coalition, we are out there and we are actually fighting, there is zero, there should be zero veteran or homeless veterans within our community. It is something that is very near and dear to us, and there's a lot of resources available for them. Now, for a lot of other people out there that are homeless, we have to look at some of these root causes, a lot of this is drug abuse. Now, some of the things that we could look for is possibly investing in as a rehabilitation center here in Richland, and we could look for funding for that. But ultimately homelessness, there's multiple issues with. A lot of it is drug abuse and, like I said, housing affordability. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Salz, thank you very much. Let's move on to question number six, and another topic, local development. And Queensgate Drive in South Richland opened up this spring, that development bringing Costco, aimed at reducing overall traffic. Mr. Salz, what are your thoughts on the project? Have you seen it accomplish its own goals so far?
Well, I already had some residents talk to me about the issues with Costco going there, especially off of Kingsley, and they're worried about the traffic there. They're worried about the left-hand turns, the lights aren't equipped for the timeframe that when the peak traffics are going to hit at Costco in that area, it's going to cause some backflow, and they're really, really worried about that. And as far as development in Richland, we need to be very, very, we need to be able to draw people into want to invest, want to build. And one of the biggest arguments I've heard from real estate agents and builders and contractors is Richland has one of the longest turnaround times for red tape and impact fees than any of the tri-cities. And in fact, to start a build in Pasco, it takes about a week long, whereas in Richland there's a lot more red tape involved, a lot more small fees. If we want people to come in and invest, especially with North Richland, which I believe is a key place to build up in the future, you need to make it where people want to come in, want to invest, and it's not, we're not trying to nickel and dime these people trying to do good business here. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Meyer, same question.
Sure, what some people call red tape, some other people call careful management. And I think it says a lot that Costco picked Richland and not Pasco in order to build their new facility. There are a lot of complaints about the sort of Queensgate, Two Per Tail, Kingsgate, Keene area, and there are three, maybe four, having a hard time remembering the exact number, projects already in the budget in order to address some of the concerns at intersections, widen roads, pave a whole new road over there on, I think it's Skyline. But yeah, the staff was not, city staff is not taken unawares by Costco's presence in the area, and some of this construction waited for funding from the state, some of this construction waited until previous construction was done because we can only have so many projects running at a time. But I think that things are going to be better than folks expect, and I think they're going to get better than that much quickly.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. All right, question seven from the League of Women Voters, kind of a philosophical one about the nonpartisan space that you're supposed to occupy on the Richland City Council and this idea of ideology. In fact, Mr. Meyer, earlier you used the term "culture wars," "virtue debates," which seemed to permeate a lot of our discussion. So the question is, do you believe the Richland City Council should remain nonpartisan? Why or why not? And what does it mean to govern in a nonpartisan way?
Yeah, I absolutely believe the city council should be nonpartisan. There's no possible input that the national political parties could have on how we manage our roads or our neighborhoods. Way back, the first time I ever filed to run for office, one of the political parties in Benton County sent me a copy of their platform, and they said, if you're seeking endorsement from us, here's our platform. You know, if you want, if you want, you can sign it and we'll talk more. And I read the platform, and it was just a complete, it was a carbon copy, it was identical to the national platform. Not only was there not anything specific to Richland in it, there wasn't anything specific to Benton County in it, or the state of Washington. And that lack of focus, I think, is why political parties in general are ineffective in local government. I think what happens is the folks need to perform for the higher-ups in the party, and that guides their thinking and their talking, and I don't want any part of it in my city government. I think the city needs to govern for everyone, and that's why I've never been a member of a political party.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Salz, your thoughts on partisanship in a city council?
I agree. The city council should remain nonpartisan. I've been a part of a C3 organization, elected upon by veterans within the community, and it is apolitical as well. We are nonpartisan, we want to encourage, and the bottom line up front is we take care of veterans. Well, the same thing with the city council, we should be taking care of the people of Richland. We shouldn't, we be, you know, party politics aside, at the end of the day, we're trying to take care of the people, we're trying to make sure the zoning is correct, the building of roads, ensuring the safety and security of our first responders and our local people as well. And really, party politics has nothing to play in that. It's doing the right thing ethically and morally, and help making Richland become a better place to live.
All right, Mr. Salz, thank you very much. Well, our eighth and final question in our quick forum here talks about a rule in the length of a term on the council. Most council members serve four-year terms, however, the winner with the least votes in each election will serve two years. So among the races up for grabs, Position Three, Four, Six, and Seven, one of those winners is going to serve two. Mr. Salz, you go first here. What's your opinion on that rule, very unique rule here in the city?
It's, it is a unique rule, and I don't know if I actually like it, but honestly, I'm not politically ambitious, and like I said, I don't mind a two-year term, I don't mind a four-year term. I think serving the people is what we should be here for and not looking for grandeur or other aspirations. And as for if I will condone it or accept it, I honestly, I really don't have a dog in that fight. If I have to go two years or if I have to do four years, it's not going to bother me because at the end of the day, I should be there to help serve the people. That's it.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Salz. Mr. Meyer, you have an opinion on this?
Sure, speaking as the guy who got the two-year term last time, no, I'm just kidding. I think the intent behind it was to make sure that there's always an odd number of people up for election, and from that standpoint, I think it's fine. I think it's a little cruel to the new guy to say, all right, well, you finally made it, now do it again. But on the other hand, I think that I've managed to achieve a lot in just the year and a half that I've had an opportunity to participate in city council. I've convinced some, I've convinced council that some policy changes made sense, and we did them as a team. And I think that I'm happy to say that a two-year term was enough for me to make an impact. And I don't have a particular opinion as to whether it should stay or go, but I will say I'm grateful that there's a logical reason to have it, even if it's a little uncommon.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. I knew that when I asked you the question, so I was curious how that would, that would go here. Well, we want to thank you all for answering these questions once again from the League. There are a number of topics we just don't have time to cover, but we're going to give you time for some closing statements. And you know what, let's reset the clock at 90 seconds, because I want to cover anything that we might have missed or give you the last word on your campaigns. Mr. Meyer, back to the top of the order, so to speak, with your 90-second closing statement, sir.
Sure, thanks very much. I am not a politician, I don't have a political career. I've served the city of Richland for nine years so far, if you count the library board and city council work. I will continue to serve the city of Richland in whatever ways make themselves available to me. I am interested in pursuing some of the policy changes, such as making it possible to build more housing in North Richland. I'm interested in pursuing, keeping on top of pedestrian and cyclist safety. I'm interested in expanding library services to more parts of the city in person with physical installations. I'm happy with what I've got done, and I'm looking forward to doing a lot more. I think that the work that goes on at the Transit Board and the Code Enforcement Board is important, and I'm proud to be a part of that. I'd be extremely happy if I could continue in those roles, because I think they make a difference to people. I think, I think it's crucial to have a city council that understands its role within the city, which is to guide the city manager and to pass policies and regulations that enable the city manager and his or her staff to continue performing at a high level. And I'd be happy to keep helping. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Salz, your closing statement.
Well, again, I'm going to state that my main focus if elected is to ensure that Richland is a place for people who want to invest and build. We need to ensure that, you know, right now we have Amazon coming in, they're going to be spending 300 million to help build that new nuclear reactor. The state of Washington's going to do 200 million dollars. Now, these are going to be jobs that are going to help sustain us for another 20 to 30 years. There's going to be a lot of growth. Amazon's doing another 100 million dollars to build up the infrastructure from Pasco all the way to Walla Walla. There's going to be 30,000 new homes going to be built in Pasco alone. I think it's going to be vital to help build up North Richland, or maybe a bridge, because that's going to be vital for the continuance and responsible growth that we could see in Richland. Now, that being said, with this large influx, we're going to have to focus on law enforcement efforts, we're going to have first responders' ability to reach and cover all of Richland respectfully. Now, not only that, I would love to get into municipal codes, and like I said, with that one, I would love to talk with the fire chief. There is one code that I saw, if we just changed the code and we actually enforced some of the things that we're supposed to be doing, the city of Richland stands to make over a million dollars, and we could save, actually save local businesses, small businesses, over a couple hundred thousand dollars across Richland wide. And heck, if you beat me, I'd love to give it to you anyway, because these are things that we could actually do to help raise money within Richland, but also save local businesses just by doing things more efficiently and maintaining high levels of professionalism. And I think that's where I'm going to be at every day, doing the job. Thank you.
Mr. Salz, thank you very much for that closing statement, all the time we have. We covered a lot for the city of Richland today. We thank you for your answers, thank you for letting voters get to know you each a little bit better. Kurt Meyer, the incumbent council member in Position Six, challenger Kyle Salz here today. Joshua Arnold not here, but will appear on the ballot. We thank you so much for your time. And we now turn our attention to the city of Richland, in a city council that has four positions with at least three candidates in this summer's primary. And despite the best efforts of NWPB and the League of Women Voters, we have many who could not make it. So we're going to use this time to get to know the candidates who could, one each in the Position Three and Position Four races. So let's get to it. For Position Three, joining us is Pat Holton, running against incumbent Sandra Kent and fellow challenger Robert Waco. And in Position Four, it's John Meyer. I don't want to do too much nepotism today, but you are the son of city council member Kurt Meyer, his first shot at political office, running against Donald Landsman. A third candidate, Jordan Lee, has withdrawn his name, though his name will remain on this ballot. So to simplify, Pat Holton for Position Three, John Meyer for Position Four. We thank you both for being here for this Getting to Know You Forum today. Now, all of our candidates are getting a chance to introduce themselves with 90-second opening statements. Ms. Holton will begin with you, with your opening. Ms. Holton, we'll begin with you with your opening statement.
Thank you, Matt. I'm Pat Holton. I came to Richland to student teach over 50 years ago. I've loved the community ever since. I taught sixth grade at Jefferson School and thought that would be the rest of my life. And then I met my husband and three children, and then three marriages, and now two grandchildren later. And over 50 years, we're still here, intend to stay here. We love the area, and it is a unique city. And I've found that our miles and miles of riverfront that we have in Richland are unlike any city that I know, and the sense of public access to that. We have our great nuclear programs that my husband was involved in, our agriculture, our wines, and our scientific community. It just makes it a wonderful community to live. And we intend to be here. We even like it in the winters. My husband loves to hunt and fish in the winters, and I've learned to like the quiet. So we're not fleeing to the south during those months. And so I would love to be here to represent you in Richland.
All right, Ms. Holton, thank you very much. And Mr. Meyer, welcome. Glad you're a part of the fray. Let's have your opening statement, sir.
I just graduated Hanford High School, and I've seen a lot of things that are affecting our youth and a lot of things that I think our city council just isn't aware of, being mostly older and different problems that they face. Just don't, I think our city council needs a young politician to be able to speak for what he's seen in his life so far and what he thinks is necessary. And one of those things is affordable housing. Just coming out of high school, I can't afford to move out because I just don't have that kind of income. And I think it's not just young people coming out of high school, it's also coming out of college, and even people who have recently lost their jobs for a number of reasons. Maybe they got cut because of budgets. But there's plenty of people who just can't afford to have a home that fits their family and what they need. And I think our city council isn't paying enough attention to our housing shortage. I think we need more transportation that is accessible to everyone, and it gets us around the city. There's a lot of people that have to drive from West Richland to school because there just isn't a bus system that will take them where they need to go, when they need to go. And I think our transit system could be greatly improved. I think it should run more often. It should run more places. We should have more lines. And I think if given a chance, people would appreciate things like that.
All right, Ms. Meyer, thank you very much for bringing your perspective here. The long trip from Hanford High School to the WSU Tri-City Studio here right across the street. All right, let's move on to our questions from the League of Women Voters. And starting with an issue that may be on the ballot in November is whether or not all members of the council should represent the entire city of Richland, or whether there should be some distinction between other areas that the city may have. What are your thoughts on this issue, Ms. Holton?
Well, it sounds really good, but it really divides up our city. For instance, I'm running from one of the areas that is underrepresented, and it's really more of a political issue than actually representing. There's very few residence requirements to be in there. It's subject to gerrymandering and all sorts of things. Those boundaries will be continuing to change as we grow. And so it sounds really good. Everybody loves the sound of that. You've got someone to represent you. But we do have a much more diverse group than what people realize that we do. We have city council members from all areas of the city, and including me, I would be the most diverse on there, and I would love to represent.
All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Meyer, the same question to you about dividing up the city, many municipalities, call them wards, where you represent a certain portion of the city. What are your thoughts on representing the city as a whole versus the neighborhood version?
Well, I know it's a little contraindicated since I'm running, and so is my dad. So obviously, if this passes, we won't both be on city council. But I do think it's a good idea. I think it's important that everywhere in our city feels like they have someone that represents them and their needs. Most of our city council is actually from the same district in South Richland. And I think it's, there are a lot of places here that have their own specific issues that they need to be addressed, that don't affect all of our city, but their specific area might need attention. And if they have someone who they feel is one of their own and from there and lives there, I think everybody feels like they have a greater voice in their own council, even if they're not a part of it.
All right, thank you very much for that answer. Let's move on to question number two. And by the way, we have eight questions we'll handle here today, and this will go by pretty quickly. And this is on the topic of homelessness, and the data shows it just continues to grow in the region. Mr. Meyer, you talked about affordable housing at the start in your opening statement, but homelessness has become an issue for Richland. So what do you see as a possible solution for this issue?
I think a big problem that creates homelessness is people can't afford to have a home where they're able to keep their rent flowing, and they need to be able to afford themselves a house that fits their standards of living. And as long as we have this housing shortage, and as long as there is such a high average income needed to be able to afford an apartment in the tri-cities, I think it's just going to keep getting worse because inflation keeps going up and people keep needing more and more money to get by. And if our housing doesn't drop, then it's, the people are never going to be able to afford a home. So I think really what we need to focus on to help make people home again is making it easier to find a place to live.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. Ms. Holton, same question to you. What are the solutions for homelessness in Richland?
Well, it's not just housing issue. I know people whose children are quote homeless, and they would do anything to get them to move home, and they choose to be on the street, and it breaks their heart. And so we need a three-pronged approach compassionately. Part of it is drug abuse, and part of it is mental illness, and we need to deal with those problems. And Benton County is working on solutions to deal with those problems. And bringing down the cost of housing is critically important. And I would look at things that we're doing as a city that are contributing unnecessarily to the cost of housing. And different zoning requirements, different permitting processes, so that, to bring down the cost of housing.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Holton. And I can tell, not enough time to discuss many of these very convoluted issues, but I appreciate the attempt in a minute's time. All right, let's move on to our third question, meant to dig into this relationship between the city council and any number of city boards and commissions. For example, the desire for the library board to make a recommendation on a proposal for, say, a book ban. So the question is, what role should the council members have in decision-making when the city's boards and commissions, like the library board, zoning board, parks board, or other policy boards submit recommendations? What should that relationship be like, Ms. Holton?
Well, it's critically important to have elected officials because they are responsible to represent the people in a way that no one else is, and that's why we are elected. And those boards are critically important to really delve deep into the issues. Their recommendations need to be very seriously considered. But ultimately, it is the elected officials that will be voting, and not just one person, but the whole board would be voting on different issues. And that's important to our democratic process.
All right, thanks, Ms. Holton. And then, Mr. Meyer, it's the same question to you. That relationship between a city council and all the boards that make recommendations to it.
I think the boards are a very important part of our city, and I think being able to have so many of them is greatly beneficial because it's not just the same seven people on city council making all the decisions for everything. I think it's great that we have such a diverse amount of these different boards and how everyone on them doesn't necessarily need to be part of city council. It's all, the more people we have in power like this, I think the more of a public has power too, because they can go out and say, I don't want to be city councilman, but I want to serve on the library board because that's what I care about. And I think that you should be able to have influence over things that you care about like that specifically, not necessarily have to go out and be a city councilman because that's not for everybody.
All right, Ms. Meyer, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to question number four. And we like to talk about some of the things that are in the headlines here, a unique discussion that's been brought up nationally, is actually applying here locally. Recent discussion at the Pasco City Council, it was a surprise for many to learn that Pasco adds fluoride to their water, but Kennewick and Richland do not. Now, reportedly, that's because Kennewick and Richland have a naturally occurring level of it, so they do not need to add to it. Washington State does not mandate fluoridation. The decision rests with communities and their governments. What would your decision be on that matter, Mr. Meyer?
I think fluoride in the water is great. Dentists put it on your teeth when you go, unless you tell them not to, because it just improves your health in your mouth. And it's, putting it in the water means you don't have to go through that at the dentist. And people who don't go to the dentist very often, which is a lot of people, they still get that benefit. There's really no negative side effects of fluoride. I don't think there's any reason that we shouldn't have it in our water system as well.
All right, thanks, Mr. Meyer. Getting to the heart of the question there, are you for or against putting it in the water? Ms. Holton, what's your response? What are your thoughts on this?
Well, I think since we're not doing it now, there was good reasons to not do it. And there are people that do object to fluoride in the water and health concerns for a certain amount of people. And so I would be very inclined to keep with the current recommendations and not add something that is working now. We have very clean water in the tri-cities. I've been drinking it for over 50 years. It's a great asset to the city. I would, as a city council, I would be touring the facility, which I did about 50 years ago, and how clean our water was. And so I would do everything to promote it. I drink it out of the tap, and I love our water department. And so it's working. I wouldn't add something to it.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Holton. All right, let's move on to question number five, this one on local development. Queensgate Drive in South Richland opened up this spring. That development bringing Costco, aimed at reducing overall traffic. Ms. Holton, the question for you is, what are your thoughts on the project? Do you see it accomplishing its own goals?
Well, people love Costco. There's no question about it. The traffic, I think, is going to be a little nuts. I think it's going to be a great economic boon to the tri-cities because people love Costco. Living near Safeway in a walkable community, I would also be interested in things that impact Safeway, and certainly Costco impacts Safeway. All the delivery services impact Safeway. And I would be talking to the smaller grocery stores to see if we have city policies in place that are negatively affecting them. But it'll be a great boon to the city. I hear that Pasco is not happy that they rejected Costco. I think it would have been a great location, but now it's ours, and it'll be a tremendous tax base for the city of Richland.
All right, Ms. Holton, thank you very much. Mr. Meyer, same question to you.
I think having a Costco in our city is great. The Costco in Kennewick gets people to drive in from Idaho and Oregon and way north, like in Moses Lake, and they all come down here just for Costco because there just isn't one around us. It's actually one of the busiest Costcos in America, and I think having one in our city, which is supposedly even bigger with 30 gas pumps, is just going to be a great tax draw that our city has. And I think not only is it going to be good for the tax income, it's also going to be good for the whole area in Queensgate. And now there's more traffic there, all the stores are going to do better. I think it's just a great thing for our city all around.
All right, Ms. Meyer, thank you very much. All right, moving on quickly to question number six. And as we talk about councils and council members all having your budget priorities, almost all of you in your cities have less to spend on those priorities at the moment. How might state or federal budget cuts affect the city budget? And, Mr. Meyer, what do you see as a possible solution to those budget cuts?
I think there are plenty of places we can bring in more tax revenue to help increase our city's budget. Like, for instance, there are plenty of marijuana dispensaries throughout the tri-cities, but there's none in Richland because our city code just doesn't allow it. And I think that's a huge tax draw that we're just not, we're throwing that away, basically, because if you want to go and buy marijuana, you're just going to drive to Pasco or West Richland. But if we have one in city, then we can just get that tax revenue instead of Pasco or West Richland or Kennewick getting that instead. And I think there's other things we can do. We can take away from a lot of places, like our police budget, I think, just doesn't need to be as high as it is. We don't have a lot of crime here. It's not really going up at all. And I think that we're just, we don't need that strong of a police force because our city's great, and it doesn't have a really big crime problem. We can put that into better things.
All right, thank you, Mr. Meyer. And Ms. Holton, same question to you. How do you handle the budget issues, especially with the idea that there will be less to spend?
Well, my husband and I are both very frugal. We have no debt, including our home, our cars, kids' college education. That's why, that's how we've lived our life, and, which means now we can do whatever we want to do. We can give it away. We just booked a two-week cruise to the Mediterranean. And so I would be looking at all our budgets to see where we're needlessly spending money because it just is kind of the nature of the beast. It gets in there. And then I would also be looking for just common sense ways of areas that we can do things for little money. I'm a paddleboarder. My area, a lot of people come in and go kayaking and paddleboarding. I think we could, for very low cost, extend our paddleboarding and kayaking areas and take some of the stress away from the Park City entrance, which is overcrowded, and move it to other areas and open it up. But I would be looking at things that we can do with relatively low cost and where we can cut.
All right, Ms. Holton, thank you very much. Let's move on to question number seven, this one another, I would say budget-related question, this time the budgets of your citizens, and relates to how the tariffs are affecting people in the community. How might tariffs affect the city of Richland and your constituents, Ms. Holton?
Well, we're a big agricultural area. That's, I think, the one that I hear of the most is, and we export a lot of potatoes, for instance, to China and Japan. And so agricultural tariffs, I think, are a big one in this area. You know, consumer goods too. But yeah, as a city council person, it would be something for me to be aware of, but not something I could impact directly. That's a national-level issue. But dealing with those in common sense ways, communicating with our legislators would be a big part of dealing with those issues. And I know personally all of our legislatures from this area, and would be able to talk with them and one-on-one and working through these issues.
All right, thank you, Ms. Holton. Mr. Meyer, the same question to you, as we've, everybody knows what's going on with tariffs, but assessing as a council member how that might impact us here locally?
I think the tariffs really impact those of us who are impoverished the most because they're the ones who need every cent to get by, and they're the ones who are really going to struggle when everything's going up by a dollar or two. So if it's harder for them to afford their food and afford their appliances and everything they need, then that's who's really going to feel it the most. There's not much we can do on city council because that's not a city council policy, that's a national policy. And I think that, really, that there isn't much we can do for them, but being mindful of how their lives are getting harder is important. And anything we can do to ease that, like having more food drives or coat drives, things like that. more food drives or coat drives, things like that. And just being more involved in our community and seeing what really is hurting the most right now is important.
Thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. All right, let's move on to our eighth and final question before we get a chance to do some closing statements. And this question is on immigration. And the league is curious about city council intervention on immigration enforcement. Where do you stand on things like sanctuary cities and those sorts of proclamations at the city level?
Well, it's a state, it's a state thing that we're all a sanctuary state. Our police force isn't allowed to help ICE. And there's not really anything we can do to change that because we are all held at that standard of being a sanctuary state. The proclamation of not being a sanctuary city really does not impact much because the police force still can't assist ICE. And immigration isn't our job on city council to fix or improve in any way. That's not a city council issue. So I just don't feel like there's really any reason to get involved with that labeling and everything in our city because it's not going to change anything.
All right, Mr. Meyer, thank you very much. Ms. Holton, same question to you.
Well, we're really in the crosshairs because we have one policy nationally. We have another policy statewide. And then we have local opinion. I would be well aware of anyone that was here and here legally and working that was being swept up. I think that's been the concern of people, that hardworking people are being torn away from where they have been for years. I would not be opposed if we have prisoners that are here illegally, returning them to their country of origin and cooperating with that. And so it's a, it is a very sticky wicket. But dealing compassionately and yeah, there is empathy for these people that have come through what was policy here when they came across and dealing with them compassionately.
All right, Ms. Holton, thank you very much. Well, we appreciate your responses. Just two of you here today allowed us to dig into a few more topics than with some of our other forums. But I have set aside some time for some closing statements. And I want to ask our timers, can we set that clock at 90 seconds here? And Ms. Holton, here first, any topics we didn't cover, an opportunity for a closing statement from you today?
Well, I'm glad I'm not running against John. I, either I will have an opportunity to speak with him and his concerns, or I will be on the city council with him, which I would greatly look forward to his impact. I, my home being where it is, I'm really at a crossroads for a number of things. I'm at an entrance to the park. I have low subsidized housing nearby. We have homeless people going through on a regular basis. We also have high-income housing. So we are really a mix of things. And I am the best person to be on the council to represent a very diverse group of people. And I would work with common sense things. One of our biggest assets is our Leslie Groves Park and our Howard Amon Park and all of that in between. I would learn to, I would work to develop that access for the people of the area who come in from all over. It's very popular, but also preserve the environment. But I think people coming in, learn to love the environment and care for the environment. I would build community. Things like the Iron Man race, the 200,000 people that are coming in on the cruises every year, and our Fourth of July Neighborhood Party, build community. And that's so important. It's not just about buildings. It's building a, a good place to live.
All right, Ms. Holton, thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Mr. Meyer, your closing statement, sir?
Well, I think it's very important that our city council rules with passion and, sorry, compassion. I think it's important that we are taking into account that everybody is different and they're all facing different needs and different struggles. And it's important that we are all being very mindful of what our city really needs to happen. And I think there are a lot of issues going on in the news right now that affect everybody, but there's not much we can do about it. And so we should really focus on aiding in the ways that we can help, like making it easier to get to a job if you don't have a car or can't afford a car, or making it easier just to be able to afford your rent. Anything we can do to help people get by on a daily basis is really, I think, should be our goal. Because I think the easier it is for people in our city, the happier they're going to be and the better our city is going to be. Because happy people don't do bad things generally. So I hope that if I am elected, that I can be able to be that kind of aiding force on the council and really speak to all of our underprivileged people and our young people who don't have the voice that these successful and older people have for their council. And I really want to just be able to help everybody and get by.
And now to our position seven candidates. Joining us in studio are Joshua Short and Tony Sanchez. These gentlemen challengers in a four-person primary that includes incumbent Ryan Witten and challenger Colin Michael. Neither Mr. Witten nor Mr. Michael responded to the invitation to be here today. But just like with the other race you just saw, we've got two here. And Mr. Sanchez, we'll begin with your 90-second opening statement. Right to it, sir.
Sure. So hi, I'm Tony Sanchez. I moved here from Alaska about three years ago to go work at my dream job out here at LIGO. It's a cutting-edge facility where we do astronomy that's cutting-edge. And I'm trying to make myself a part of this community. I would like to help out this community by making sure that we have sufficient bus schedules and an expansion of the bus system in such a way that my coworkers who, and, and you know, people at PNL and the rest of the, the rest of the city can get around, which would reduce traffic all over town and could overall benefit the city by making sure that people can get to the locally-owned shops in Uptown. Another thing I would like to focus on is making sure that people can build houses here in Richland in a way that it's more affordable. I think we've got a lot of, approximately about 50% of the, of the housing costs are in building codes. I think we can bring these building codes either into the future by just laying them out and making sure that builders have what they need to build affordable homes. Or we can potentially find other solutions to reduce the house, the, the cost of housing.
All right, Mr. Sanchez, thank you. And thank you for being here today. Mr. Short, your opening statement, sir?
Hi, I'm Joshua Short. This is my second time running for this particular position. I was born here in Richland and grew up in Kennewick and really enjoy living in this community and want to see it continue to go along its growth progression as we add more people from different places and expand our industries and do so in a way that keeps that sort of smaller community feel that a, you know, a lot of us like in communities and a lot of the ones from here, you know, also like about it. And that, that takes a lot of different forms. I'm just running to offer a voice, some potential alternatives to the way that things have been done, a way for us all to move forward creatively together. And thank you for your time.
All right, Mr. Short, thank you very much for your opening statement. Let's move on to our questions and a one-minute time limit for answers on these. Really got to crystallize your thoughts. We'll rotate order of responses, starting at the top of Mr. Sanchez in position seven here. And an issue that may be on the ballot in November is whether or not all members of the city council should represent the entire city, or whether there should be some distinction, the wards and at-large format of a council. What are your thoughts on this? Do you support the idea?
Thank you, Matt. Yeah. I, I am familiar with the redistricting of, of Richland. And I do support this. It does seem like Northern Richland seems to be underrepresented. There seems to be a number of council members that are from kind of the same-ish area. And even if that does mean that, you know, I end up in the wrong district and, you know, you know, have to rerun or be reappointed to this position. I think this is a good idea because I think all of Richland's residents should be appropriately represented. I, I'm, I'm definitely going to support this in my campaign. And I know it doesn't say it on my pamphlet, but I am certainly for this initiative.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Short, do you approve of this idea?
Yeah, I do. Representation is important. Of course, as all at-large positions, we represent or would represent all of Richland. But focusing representation into particular neighborhoods that might have particular needs and unique characteristics to them is important. So a little, little extra on that, but yes, I do support it.
All right, Mr. Short, thank you very much. Let's move on to question number two then, Mr. Short. We'll start with you on this one. And one of the things many entities and agencies are watching right now are their budgets. I expect you anticipated a budget question at some point this election season. And not many are expecting for their budgets to grow. So let's talk about federal and state funding as it's reduced or anticipated to be reduced. How will that affect the city and what solutions are needed?
Federal and state employees live in this city. Reduction to their income or ability to provide for themselves and their family brings about all the sort of stress and unrest that usually comes with such reductions. Now, looking on the positive side of it, I guess it's an opportunity for neighborhoods and displaced people to maybe come together and keep solutions local, help their neighbors, help each other. That, that doesn't necessarily fix the sort of storm that's coming that you've mentioned, this unrest that people will experience. But the best place to take on that sort of burden is at the community level, at the, at the local level where we are here.
All right, Mr. Short, thank you very much. Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Short just referred to it as a burden, the idea that cities might have to take the brunt of some of this. What do you see as possible solutions to potential budget issues in Richland?
Yeah. So there's definitely a lot of budgeting issues that are coming out right now. And unfortunately, there's a lot of people out here who are doing great science and great technology, you know, work out at some of our national labs and other, other facilities out here who are potentially seeing a budget cut. And, you know, my loved ones here in town are potentially also on, on that, on that list. So I'm definitely going to do everything I can to make sure that on both the state, national, and even county level, that, you know, our workers have the funding that they need to be able to pay their rents and, you know, make their car notes. That's important because, you know, that's what's kind of running this town. But also, there is some amount of, you know, pulling together as a community to make sure that we have what each other need because it takes an entire village. And Richland is that village.
All right, Mr. Sanchez, thank you very much. And along the same lines for question number three of federal decisions and their impact locally, let's talk tariffs. And Mr. Sanchez, your, your first year, what's your understanding of how tariffs might affect the city, especially in industries that are so important here economically? What can the city do to, in that same sort of vein, manage the budget in the face of tariffs?
That's fair. Yeah. Thanks, Matt. So we've got, we've got a lot of tariffs that we're seeing here in town. And that's, that's increasing the price of steel and the price of building and the price of materials. And that's going to make everything go up in, you know, in price. And, you know, perhaps some of the things that we can do is, is try and, I imagine, try and, try and make some of these things here in town, or try to buy them from other locations here nationally. And, you know, I understand that there's a limit to this. And I understand that that's going to be probably expensive on its own. But, you know, let's also not forget that perhaps we also have a voice here in Richland. And we can use that voice to voice our, you know, to, to voice our dissatisfaction with the representation, representation that we currently have on the national level.
All right, Mr. Sanchez, thank you very much. And Mr. Short, same question to you.
Tariff, an import tariff is a tax on the, the end consumer, the importer. It gets passed on to all of us. It's going to show up in the products that we buy that are not domestically manufactured. The logic behind them is that if there's a surplus of things coming in from other countries and we have the domestic capability to produce those, then the tariffs would create an incentive for local manufacturing. But that's not really the incentive that we have. You know, like with tariffs on silicon and like rare earth minerals and computer parts, are we going to create a chip fab here in Richland? We don't have much forest land for a lumber mill. It's, it's all an interconnected web of stuff. And yeah, what, what happened nationally is not going to do us, serve us locally. So it's a time for us to come together and get creative and help each other here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Short. Creativity in the face of national decision-making, sort of a theme of this forum, as you know, and immigration enforcement across the country does have the radar up for a number of local communities and many of them handling it in many different ways. A report released just this May from the Washington State Department of Budget and Policy estimated migrant workers at 150 million to the state of Washington's GDP. So in a region like ours, what is the solution to balancing immigration enforcement and that economic stability? Mr. Short, I'll let you choose how to answer that one.
So I don't think it's anything to pat ourselves on the back for having a large migrant and foreign workforce that doesn't have leverage on its own, that we're underpaying as a necessity for us to have our standard of living. Kicking people like this out of our communities is an even further step in the wrong direction. So we need ways to, to bring more in to the country to help people get along and, you know, all for one and one for all it, make, make the dream helping each other. And because the better that any of us do individually, the, the better we all do collectively.
All right, Mr. Short, thank you very much. Mr. Sanchez, that same question to you.
Yeah, thanks. So yes, we do have a large, a, a large population of immigrants in the country. And, you know, there, there is a crackdown on, on, you know, removing these people. And that's going to affect us. That's going to affect us economically because they are people who pay taxes. And, you know, they're not taking it back out of the system. You know, they don't, they don't get a tax return back. And, you know, they're doing labor for us. We've already seen some of the national, you know, legislations on this being kind of pulled back for hospitality and farm workers. Because, you know, the, the people who own the farms have been saying, hey, you've been taking away my strong labor force. And so we do have to strike a balance between, you know, having everyone here and, you know, underpaying them and also making sure that our economy doesn't tank by removing these hard workers. So once again, we should stand together and make sure that we're protecting our economy and the people that make that economy up.
All right, Ms. Sanchez, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to question number five. And we'll go right back to the top here. Homelessness, top of mind for most cities, including Richland. What do you see as possible solutions for the homeless issue in the city? Yes, Mr. Sanchez?
On me? Oh, yes. Yeah. So, yeah, there is, there is, there are people in our, in, in the Richland community who maybe are, you know, potentially homeless or otherwise of, you know, sleeping around town on the, near the Uptown-ish area, which is unfortunate. And I understand that this has been kind of something difficult to deal with. We should be trying to help these people. We should be trying to make sure that, you know, everyone has the resources that they're, that, that they need. And if we And if we can, we should be able to, you know, get these people the help that they need. With that said, I also understand that some of this might be drug-related. And even with that said, people, people who have an addiction should be taken care of in, in the ways that they need to. And so I think, I think that we could, we could move forward as a community. There's not that much homelessness here. We're not Seattle. We can take care of our own. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Short, solutions for homelessness?
Yeah, it's, we're at the, the beginning stages of it being a problem. We're, we're not as big as Seattle. The problem isn't as big as Seattle. So we have the advantage of knowing that this is a little bit of the growing pain of how, at least the, the cities that we structured them, how they work. It would be nice to see a different local social contract come about so that we treated things like housing and food as basic human rights. When I have a neighbor or somebody nearby in the community, you know, even camping down at the park, the more worried they are about their own survival, the worse that they act. The better our neighbors are, the better the experience for us. And to treat, it is a pay-to-live situation for, for housing and food is always going to leave people behind. It's inevitable, and charity will never make up for the gaps.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Short. Let's move on to question number six, and we'll start with you here. On local development, Queensgate Drive in South Richland has opened up, opened up this spring, that development bringing a Costco local opinion starting to come in on that development. What are your thoughts on the project, and do you see it accomplishing its own goals?
A lot of development around here is, to be candid, a bit of a tragedy, a travesty. It's an assault against nature. It doesn't fit into the landscape. It's not for people. It's, it's not even for the small local business owners anymore. It's for an increasing number of external parasites to take things from us. And there are nice amenities and things for the wealthy that can afford them, but the same group is going to be enjoying these things while also complaining about the presence of the people that can't, the increasing presence of the people that can't.
All right, Mr. Short, thank you. Mr. Sanchez, your thoughts on the Queensgate development?
As someone who lives in the Queensgate area and has had to find new places to park my car, I, I both see the problems and, you know, what they're trying to solve here. I guess, I guess we needed another Costco in Tri-Cities. I am not particularly that big of a Costco shopper, but I also understand that Costco's bringing jobs in. And that's, you know, I, I, I would love for those people to be able to get jobs at, you know, locally-owned businesses, but unfortunately, Costco's going in and they're, they're going to hire people, and I'm okay with that, even if they took out an orchard to put up the Costco parking lot. That's rather unfortunate and definitely has kind of ruined my view because now I look at this giant side of up Costco. But also, you know, it is business here in Richland, and that's going to bring in tax money and revenue for us, so.
All right, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to question number seven from the League of Women Voters. This one sort of philosophical about how city council should govern, certainly in the context of what you might call ideological immovability, and should a city council, as Richland's is, be nonpartisan? And what does it mean to govern a city in a nonpartisan way? Mr. Sanchez?
Sure, yes. So, yeah, I, I do believe that the city council should be relatively nonpartisan, and that's because we've got to represent everyone. I understand that, you know, not all of, of Richland is, you know, conservative, and, you know, there are some progressives. I work with a lot of, you know, progressives out there in the, you know, national labs and stuff like that. So I understand that there are, there are, you know, multiple people. It takes a village to run this community, and they should be represented fairly. And I, and I, I'm going to do my best to make sure that I'm, you know, doing like a nonpartisan sort of service here, you know, despite my, my personal beliefs. But there are certain lines that I won't cross as far as my convictions, and I guess I'm running out of time, but we can get into that later.
All right, thank you very much. We do have time for closing statements as well, and this may fit along those lines of stating your case, but do you believe a city council should be nonpartisan, and what does it look like to govern that way?
Yeah, it should be nonpartisan. Most people should probably be nonpartisan. This isn't some sporting event of teams against other teams. Politics is just groups making decisions together. There shouldn't be like weird fractured lines drawn in the sand. It should, I guess, be about ideas and, to an extent, the ideology that drives them. And as people hoping to be representatives ourselves, you know, we've, we've got opinions and things that we would like to see, but this is about allowing the community to speak, synthesizing, becoming a place where the different voices can turn into a way forward for all.
All right, Mr. Short, thank you very much. All right, our eighth and final question here talks about a rule in the length of a term on the Richland City Council. Most council members serve four-year terms. However, the winner with the least votes will serve two years. We just talked to the gentleman who is serving that two-year term on the council. So among the races up for grabs, position three, four, six, and seven, one of those winners will serve for two years. Mr. Short, you'll go first here. What's your opinion on that rule? Does it need to be changed?
Yeah, it's the one that ends up winning with the, the tightest margin or something like this, the least number of votes.
Fewest amount of votes, according to code.
Yeah, it's, keeps it spicy, I guess. I don't see a big reason, but to, to get rid of it. But really, if we were going to make a change as to how like the election cycle works, ranked choice voting would be an amazing one, so that we're not doing this like, that's a great way to keep partisanship out of things, too, to have people able to select from the entire, the choice of people ranked and see where we overlap together. Yeah, it beats the winner-take-all and trying to find a simple majority.
All right, Mr. Sanchez, same question.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I don't mind a shorter, you know, length of, of time in office. I'm okay with that. That gives different voices an opportunity to do things in the, in the community. And I think that's, I think that's probably for the better.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez. And I want to thank you for the answers to all of those questions in this forum. If we could solve many of those issues in a minute, we'd be a much more effective television program here. We understand there's some complicated issues at play. So let's reset the clock at 90 seconds to cover anything we missed and give our candidates the last word. So 90 seconds, Mr. Sanchez, a chance to give your closing statement, sir.
I would like to say thank you for, for hosting this and making sure that our voices get heard. And to, to the city of Richland, I know that there's a lot going on, on the, on the national scale, but I think we should be focusing on local politics. The local politics are going to be the politics that affect us the most in this town. And so let's focus on how we can help each other, how we could build community, how we could build equity, like in value to the, to the community, like literally by, by building homes and getting people housed. Let's make sure that we can do these sorts of things so everyone can effectively fight the fights that they need to fight on the state and federal level. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Short, 90 seconds for your closing statement.
Thank you for your time and consideration. Vote for who you want, but, you know, please vote, be involved, be part of this community, help navigate it through the tough times that are to come, and, you know, don't add to the chaos through weird partisan bickering and culture war stuff that doesn't affect us. Here we are in a wonderful place with the river, if we can keep it, with walkability, if we can keep it, and nice parks, if we can, too, and more to add to it. Wealth of types of jobs and people desiring to be in and give back to their communities, to raise families here, to grow here, to work here. And we've already given the world quite a bit, and it's been, you know, a little bit problematic. We're a super fun cleanup site, but a lot of science and cool stuff happens here, too. So let's keep it going. Vote, even if it's not for me, vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. That's all the time we have. We covered a lot for the city of Richland today, and we really do thank you for your answers. We agree people should get, get out and vote and should do so with as much information as possible. Tony Sanchez, Joshua Short, thank you for being here today. And that covers this race for position seven. Don't forget, Mr. Short, Mr. Sanchez also running against Ryan Witten and Colin Michael, candidates for the Richland City Council. We thank everybody for their time. And one more overall thank you, as with all of our forums, we want to highlight appreciation for our candidates who took the time to be at our WSU Tri-City Studio. This is voluntary, but it's clear we all see the value in these forums and debates. We spoke with a number of candidates in eight different races this week, and every moment was important, so thank you to everybody who responded and said yes to this program. And remember, these candidates will appear on ballots for Washington's 2025 primary, which takes place on August 5th. And here's where we remind you of the deadlines. To get registered, you can register in person all the way through Election Day. You should see your mail ballots, those of you registered for mail voting, as early as July 18th. For mail-in voting registration, you have until July 28th to finish that registration. Well, this wraps up our Vote 2025 series covering races in Richland and Kennewick. And a final note before we sign off. Those of us here at NWPB fought hard this year in the face of public media cuts to bring this coverage to you. The numbers are clear. A supported public media results in a more well-informed public and a more representative government. We thank those of you who've continued your support of Northwest Public Broadcasting. We hope to bring you more coverage moving forward, and be sure to stick with NWPB on air and online for coverage of the 2025 election. You can also find these programs after they air on our YouTube channel. On behalf of NWPB and the League of Women Voters, we thank you for watching. Have a great night.